We want to recognize former Mayor Shirley Dean, who is joining the audience. Thank you for being here, Mayor Dean. So now I'm going to turn over to our Chief, Dave Brack.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Appreciate the time. It's obviously a topic of interest throughout the city in the last couple of years with this area. I just want to let you know also on Dave Brack, I have Deputy Chief Dave Ramon, who's our Operations Chief and has been a wildland firefighter for most of his adult life, in addition to working here at the City of Berkeley. We also have our Disaster and Fire Safety Commission Chair, Paul Dagan called here, as well as a few other members of the Commission. And the Chairperson, Dagan called, is prepared to answer questions about the DFSC's input on this process as quickly as possible. So, the plan for the evening, I want to keep the presentation fairly high level. We have a lot of things going on in and around the city around wildfire safety. Where we have, I think, fallen short is the communication on a cohesive plan moving forward for how we bring all these programs together to protect the city. So, we'll talk about training and response, a little bit of history, why we're here, our plans and our planning process that we're going through, how equity and environmental impact play into our plans, our partner agency collaboration. We are not immune to fires coming from other jurisdictions, and so we work closely with them. Currently, the work we're working on, the one-time funding, I want to give you an update on where we are with that, that came out of last year's surplus or excess revenue, and then future actions and what we may and may not be able to do. So, a little history on language and how we divide the city. Since the mid-twentieth century, Berkeley's divided the city into three fire zones. So Zone Three is considered the most hazardous, that is the panoramic hill area. Zone Two is the rest of the Berkeley Hills. On the map, you see the kind of tan area is what we define as Fire Zone Two, and Zone One is the rest of the city. So, why this is important, there are differences in code and building requirements depending on where you live, and any decisions we make moving forward can be sorted out and have impact on these zones. Also on this map, you see a red line intersecting the city. That is what CAL FIRE designates as the very high fire hazard severity zone. This is significant. It is a zone that the state recognizes as the delineation of where we have significant fire safety. Because we have this in our city, it makes us eligible for more grant funding through CAL FIRE or CAL OES than some other jurisdictions might. So the fact that that's there also has an impact on residents and our potential funding. So, a little bit, a quick history on fires in the city. 1923, we had a wildfire burn through the area of Lake Anza, down through the hills and all the way to Shattuck Avenue. At that time, and on this map, you see that's the area in red, is the perimeter of the fire, we had approximately 640 structures burned. In 2014, when the local hazard mitigation plan, the estimate was about 3,000 to 4,000 structures in that area right now. If that burned today, we'd have significant, significant economic and impact on loss of life. Reports from the time, we had a significant Diablo wind at that time, an easterly wind, and firefighters and the volunteers who were helping report that the only reason that fire stopped is because the wind shifted. And that's going to be significant as we talk more about what our city is threatened by. So, 1991, October 19th, the Tunnel Fire, otherwise known as the Oakland Hills, Oakland, Berkeley Hills Fire. This burned 62 structures in Berkeley and over 3,000 total structures with 25 fatalities. The picture you see here is one of the roads in Oakland near Berkeley. Many fatalities happened here, and attempt to evacuate was not successful, and people were unable to get out of the area. After the Tunnel Fire, the state and the city took action. We created a Fire Assessment District, so the city had funding for three additional fire inspectors. We made new building code requirements, ordinances about where we live, we created the Firefield Chipper Program, the Debris Bin Program. These are incentive programs to help people get rid of vegetation on their properties. Unfortunately, in 1996, Proposition 218 passed, which made it a high bar to keep districts like this going without special votes. So, 1997, after five years, that funding expired. We didn't renew it, and we lost those three dedicated staff that worked full-time on wildfire mitigation in the hills. Another thing that, so a few things that continue today, though, we still have the Firefield Chipper Program, the Debris Bin Program, those are paid out of funds from the residents who use those services. And then, we have mutual response areas. So these are above and beyond our mutual aid agreements. The jurisdictions surrounding us, Oakland, Kensington, Albany, El Dorito, we all have formal agreements that we respond en masse to reports of fires in the hills, in these areas, so that we get way more resources quickly to try to dump on these fires before they go. And the other thing that came out of the '91 fires, the Hills Emergency Forum, which we'll talk more about, this is a collaborative group that we participate in, we sit on the Board, the City Manager is one of the Board members, and we meet monthly and coordinate our efforts. So fast forward to a few years ago, Lake Haney, 2015, and then 2017, we had the Smolnappi fires, and this year of significance were the car fire and the campfire. I bring these up, not that we haven't had wildfires in the interim, but we saw a change with the drought and with the bark beetle infestation. We're seeing extreme fire behavior. Fires are moving faster than we've ever seen before. They are causing more devastation, they're jumping from the wildland through cities, and there's really no way to stop these. So we're learning a lot about what works and doesn't work about evacuation, we're learning a lot about what works and doesn't work about notifications to the public. What I would like to demonstrate in this slide, and if you look at the map, this is why this is a whole-city problem for us. So the map in front of you is the perimeter of the Tubbs Fire. This is the fire that burned from Napa County through Sonoma County and across Santa Rosa. That's the light pink shading. If you look at the bright red shading, that's the CAL FIRE high fire, very high fire hazardous zone in Santa Rosa. So that's equivalent to where our zones are on the hills. If you look at the finger that comes across, there's a little red line, that's Highway 101. Everything to the west of that is Coffee Park. This is a neighborhood very far from the high fire zones, and it burned at the ground. Chief Ramon is a resident up there, many members of our department are. We sent crews to help with this fire, and the devastation was quite something. It took out neighborhoods that had nothing to do, nowhere near a wildland urban interface. Just like we would have the winds not changed in 1943, it's potentially, the potential of that fire burning all the way to the ocean. And I think that hazard with the increasing dryness of soil and the air in California only increases as we progress through climate change. So what are we doing? Some of the things we do as a response and training, probably the most important piece of response is our emergency public information and warning. We train our crews, we train neighboring agencies, we train the public on what to do. We'll talk a little bit about the Master Mutual Aid Plan and Preposition, which is the new program. So Emergency Public Information and Warning. And I want to stress in all of this, there's more detail in the report, there's also a lot of good information on our website that's constantly available. So if you go to the Emergency Alerting portion of our website, you'll see lots of resources, and most wildfires are going to require us to communicate emergency information, as well as the ongoing status of the incident and its impacts. In the early hours of a wildland urban interface fire, emergency messaging is challenging. Quite frankly, our crews are overwhelmed, they're trying to get people out, and it takes a little while to ramp up the backup, the support of an emergency operations center to do things like emergency messaging. So, we have a number of tools, we encourage the public to know what to do, and part of what we're going to be doing is rolling out wire information for them. Everybody should sign up for AC Alert. AC Alert is the county-wide messaging system, we have local control over some messaging. If we want to send a wireless emergency alert, which is kind of like an Amber Alert, where your phone just blows up and tells you something's going on, we go through the county to request that. We can't send that as a city, that's a federal standard. So we're in constant partnership with them. But if you're signed up for AC Alert, you can get non-emergency messages, you would get lower-level messages, but if we do have something where we need immediate life protective actions to be taken, we can push things out, whether you sign up or not. NYXL is a system that can tie into AC Alert, or at times the police department uses it for their own information, traffic control, things like that. That will also be used for emergency alerting. I mentioned wireless emergency alerts. Honestly, people these days go to social media, they go to our websites to find information, and anything we post, anything we send out as a notification will end up on the City of Berkeley website with that notification. Just as an example of social media, as an official and an unofficial medium, on the night of the Napa earthquake, it was about 4:00 AM, I was the Deputy Chief at the time, I woke up, one of our emergency managers and Fire Chief, Chief Dong at the time, we all turned our radios on and didn't hear calls coming in in Berkeley, so the next thing we did was go to Twitter. And we knew before the USGS had put out on our website where the epicenter was, we knew that that earthquake had been in Napa, because Twitter blew up about the damage in Napa. So we rested a little bit easier about Berkeley and started thinking how can we support that response. So social media is a very real way that we intend to be monitoring and using as information. So, again, Emergency Alerting website, we encourage the public, and we will support through training and outreach as we roll out more formal plans, how to encourage people to know where to get information and information. For our own training, for our crews, we do annual wildland firefighter training. This is very different than structural firefighting, so we make sure everybody has hands-on experience every year. We are rolling out, as is included in the packet and is now going through commission review process, our evacuation plan for this year. We are learning a lot about it. It's available in the packet for you to look at and to give feedback. We're, as part of the funding, the one-time funding, in addition to the regular work at OES and Fire Des for Training, we're going to be working with the public on what does it mean, how are we going to notify you. We're going to be splitting the city into grids that are really manageable numbers of people and properties and businesses to be able to notify, to leave in a systematic fashion as we can. So, how do we identify that for the people who live and work and play in those places? How can they expect to be notified? What does it mean to live in a particular place or to be in a particular place, and where are you going to go? So that's going to be a big outreach push this year. And then, we are working on a capstone functional exercise for the summer to test that. In 2015, we partnered with the Commissioners and the CERT program to identify properties in the hills that we brought in, fire agencies from around the region, as well as our own firefighters, the CERT, and city responders, police, and did a fully functional drill over the course of a week in the hills. We used real properties, worked through real pinch points that we couldn't drive through and worked through real problems. So we're hoping to mimic that this summer, but with a focus on evacuation. That was one of the big challenges we had last time, notification and evacuation. So we're identifying that, we're going to train with people, with agencies, and do a fully functional drill this summer. I think I talked to special ops about that. In terms of response, so, the rest of what we talked about is going to be, how do we stop this from happening? But the reality is, it's going to happen again, and we need to jump on it. When we have to respond, we want to get on it early, and we want to keep it small, and we want to get people out. So, our MRAs, our formal agreements with the local agencies, again, to screw out the Tunnel Fire, those are in place, we review them every now and then, we modify them if necessary. We will get an immediate and overwhelming response from our local neighbors. California, however, has a Master Mutual Aid Plan of which Berkeley is a part of. This is the mechanism by which we send people around the state every year, and we expect that we will get assistance when it is needed in Berkeley. This is coordinated at the county level, so when a request comes in from anywhere around the state that goes to Alameda County Operational Area, they send out requests. We list in advance what we think we have available that day and send resources. We don't send people unless we can, for example, when the Tubbs Fire picked off and Napa was burning toward Santa Rosa, Deputy Chief Ramon was at home and called me and said, "We need help, like, there's something bad going on." The problem was, I was here, and our Battalion Chief on duty, who also was in Santa Rosa, we were fighting a fire in Berkeley, in the hills, with the same red flag conditions at the time, right behind Ajax Place, it was an East Bay Park fire, it was a grass fire. The request came from Santa Rosa formally, and we said, "No, we had to stay out." It's a tough decision, right? But we had to protect our city first. So around, that fire picked off around 1:00, around 4:00, 4:30, we called ours under control, and the first thing we did was send in insects. And we had a meetup with the strike team, and they were gone for weeks. So, we're not going to put our city at greater risk by sending these resources out, but we are expected, and we, it's an obligation, to participate in this system, because we will get the help back when we need it at the time. A new thing that happened in 2018 that was funded with one-time funding, and the new Governor has put it into his ongoing budget proposal, is the concept of prepositioning. So, we are getting better at predicting fire weather and understanding what the risks are of an ignition and fire spread, and we were one of the first places this year, mostly to the work of Deputy Chief Ramon, to get prepositioned strike teams in Alameda County on red flag days. The concept being, let's get more resources here before the fire even starts. In the same way, we're looking at, do we need people to leave before a fire starts? You know, PG needs to put power down, if we know, you know, there's going to be bad weather and you have access and functional needs, maybe you should leave a little earlier. We're going to bring the resources in before we need them. And thankfully, none of those strike teams had to be used this year, but it was the first time statewide we tried it. It was pretty successful, and there's funding to keep that program going. So that was a big collaboration of state fire agencies, local fire agencies, and the legislature to get that funding, and the new Governor supports in the process. So that's pretty exciting to have extra crews sitting here waiting in case something happens. So what are we doing in terms of formal planning? As I mentioned, we have drafted a wildfire evacuation plan. We have also drafted a fire weather coordination plan, and then we always draft our local hazard mitigation plan, so we'll talk about each of those a little bit. Wildfire evacuation, we're not going to stop a major fire on a red flag day with winds blowing from the east and hot weather, right? We know that. We can mitigate it, we can keep it small, we can hopefully jump on it, but if that thing gets going, as like in 1991, there's not a lot we're going to be able to do except people get out of the way. We looked at best practices around the state, and, as you know, I emailed most of you when the campfire got started, because some of the concepts in the Paradise evacuation plan, Paradise is a very different city with a very different problem than we have, but the concept of gridding out the city, having people understand when they're going to get notified and where to go, is the concept that we wanted, and actually CAL OES encouraged us to bring into our plan. So we did. They did not have a good outcome in their evacuation, and we get that. But the key pieces that they have are one way in, one way out. They built a second road to support that, and they have too many people going out one or two roads. We're going to have a very different situation, we're going to educate our public differently. We're going to grid out the city, and depending on where you live, we're going to encourage people to figure out different ways to go. We can't tell you, you're going to come down Marin, we can't tell you, you're going to come down Centennial, because we don't know which way a fire is going to go or where it's going to start. So it's going to be up to us, as early as possible, to notify people, based on where they live in their grid, where the fire is coming from, and go. It'll be more critical and more beneficial if the public will understand. A big message we have is, if you're not sure, if you haven't heard from us, and you're not sure, go. It's a hard thing to do, people don't want to do that, but we're going to be encouraging it and trying to move that forward. So that plan is out for review. We are happy, it's included, you can contact me directly if you have feedback, and then there's instructions, the Commissions are looking at it. We anticipate having that finalized and training on and exercising this summer. Fire weather coordination, this is a little bit of a different beast. In the 2017 fires, that whole week that those fires were going on, the National Weather Service kept issuing red flag alerts. And the weather criteria they were using was not what we as the fire service traditionally consider red flag or extreme weather. So that prompted us to engage with the National Weather Service and determine, hey, what does it mean? What are you guys trying to, what are you trying to accomplish by issuing these alerts? And how do we bring the public what they're hearing and our expectations together? So, our OES Department has worked directly with them, we are defining a couple different levels of what we're going to want to do, and this could inform, as we hash this out, both behavior we want the public to take, it's going to inform actions that we as the Department and the city take. It could also trigger code changes. There's a lot of conversation about parking restrictions, extra enforcement, things like that. We think this will be the mechanism that we use to trigger those types of things. So this is the grid that we are using as our weather coordination plan, and again, this has been the collaboration of the National Weather Service and our Department specifically. We're hoping it's going to be a model of a region we're engaging with Oakland and other bigger agencies in the area, so that we can all be on the same page. Not going to go into the details, but essentially, when we hit the weather, anything in red or purple is when they want to issue a red flag. Anything that we define as purple is when we consider it extreme fire weather behavior. So those two different levels, if it's in the red, yeah, we'll issue an AC Alert saying it could be bad today, we might have some restrictions, we'll change the fire signs, we might put up extra controls. If it's in the purple, that's when significant behavior changes will happen. City services will change, parking restrictions may go in enforcement, bans on burning, all kinds of things. Maybe even stopping construction, if there's hot construction happening, things like, you know, lawnmowers, they could kick up sparks. We can look at that whole thing, and as part of what we're going to do is a code review to match what we want the behavior to be, what the expected change or that we anticipate. Finally, the local hazard mitigation plan, I'm not going to go into much detail about this, it is at every commission in the city right now. We are, we have OES staff running all over the place to do presentations and get public feedback. It's, the draft is attached, 2014 was the latest, this will be coming back to Council, it goes through public review now, we incorporate all the feedback, then it goes to CAL OES, it goes to CAL FIRE, after the state approves it, it goes to FEMA, after it goes to FEMA, it comes back to you for final adoption. This triggers a lot of potential grant money, this is a necessary thing that happens every five years. The James Kennedy remodel was funded largely with a grant from FEMA that required the local hazard mitigation plan. It's a collaboration of every department, all kinds of agencies. It's really an impressive document, and goes into a lot of information about fire-specific issues. One thing of note, and then I'll move on to the next thing, the local hazard mitigation plan is about natural disasters and threats. So there are some human-made things in there. We consider climate change as part of the threat, we consider chemical releases as a result of earthquakes or fires as part of it, but for the most part, it's supposed to be about natural disasters. So if you have questions or feedback, we encourage you to consider it in that context. So I want to talk a little bit about equity and the environmental impact of what we're talking about here. If you look at the map that's in front of you, this is, this is in the draft of the local hazard mitigation plan, that's a percentage of tree coverage across the city. And as the Fire Chief, I'm not going to speak to beautification or things like that, as the Fire Chief, I would love it if we could reverse this map. If the hills were grass and yards and the occasional oak tree, perhaps, I don't want to get species-dependent, but well-trimmed, we'll say well-trimmed woodland cay trees, and the bulk of our carbon offset footprint, I'll call it, through vegetation was in the flats, if we could add trees down there, and a nice kind of natural California fuzzy hill landscape in the hills, that would be my ideal world as Fire Chief, knowing the reality of this city and the beauty of the trees in the hills, that's probably a longer-term goal. But I think that's an opportunity that we have, when we look at the impact of wildfire, smoke, climate change, and carbon release, as we consider vegetation management in the hills, we need to consider replacing that in other parts of the city. I don't have a good answer to that yet, all of this will involve naturalists and collaborative effort. I recently was at a conference on wildfire up in Turkey, and close to that is the UC Berkeley Sage Ten Field Research Station. If you're not familiar with it, it's a huge, huge acreage of US forest, national forest in collaboration with UC, and they do a lot of forest research and whatnot. But, in the early 2000s, they recognized that they didn't have a healthy forest from a fire management perspective. So the Sage Ten researchers who managed it engaged the logging industry, environmental activists and lobbyists, they engaged the scientific community, and they engaged the US Forest Service, went through a multi-stage process of collaboration, and came to consensus of all those groups on a forest management plan that was unanimously approved at the Forest Service level and supported by all the groups. So there were no letters of contention or in opposition of it from any of the stakeholders. We don't have a forest like that in Berkeley, but we do have similar disparate groups with lots of different interests. And so, it was really inspirational to see how you can come to consensus, you can come to agreement on how to do this type of stuff. So as we move forward with these plans, both in the city and for our camps, I want to, one of the things I'm going to be encouraging is learning from that process and trying to engage different groups on how we do this. All right, let's talk a little bit about what we're doing, because quite frankly, we don't have much forest in Berkeley, right? We don't have much wildland, we have Tilton Park, most of UC's wildland is their property or in Oakland. So we need to collaborate, we need a fire break around our city that is other people's stuff. The Hills Emergency Forum, you can see the agencies that are involved, we meet monthly. In the last six months or so, I personally have been going to the meetings, there's a lot of collaboration around grant opportunities here. UC just got a bunch of grant money from CAL OES and CAL FIRE. We are talking about collaborative grant applications, the amount of money that CAL FIRE has available, and it's all cap and trade dollars, because of the reduction of the carbon footprint by not having forest fires is enormous. So there's a ton of money right now in grant opportunities, and the more we collaborate with agencies that have a lot of this work to do, the more likely we are to get that benefit to the City of Berkeley. In addition, and I attached the annual report from last year, there is, between the cities and the Park District and UC, a lot of work that I think people are worried about that they don't hear about happening, going on to protect our city. So I wanted to be clear that, while we don't direct everything, we can certainly influence everything. And just at the last meeting, UC, they have something like $10 million they have to spend on forest management, and they asked, they said, "What would benefit your city? Where would we put it?" And so we talked about Star Creek, or Star Canyon above the stadium, protecting panoramic way, you know, coordinating with PG&E on their work that they're doing on the hills. So that's the kind of dialogue that happens every single month, and the amount of grant opportunities that are coming in right now, that's your dollar amount, is going to be pretty nice, because there's a lot of opportunity across the region. I want to talk a little bit about PG&E, because we're a little bit in no-man's land right now. You know, bankrupt two doesn't necessarily mean they're going to go away, it's going to be restructured. So, from a fire department perspective, they've been very good partners, they meet with us regularly, they have rolled out their community wildfire safety program, and when they first brought it to us, we didn't like it. There were a lot of things that they hadn't considered, because they're not firefighters, right? And they listened to us and took that feedback and adjusted their program they saw we did. So, we're a little bit of a wait and hold, they do a lot of work throughout the city, and we're going to continue being engaged with them as we move forward. We actually have one of our retired Assistant Chiefs is one of the main contacts we have with the city. So currently, we do our annual fire zone inspections. We don't have dedicated fire departments staff to do this, so our fire engines, they do inspections from essentially Grizzly Peak to East Bay Regional Park. Those are the properties that we inspect currently. We talked a little bit about the Firefield Chipper Program, the Debris Bin Program, those are available to residents to help remove their vegetation. And then we have fire fuel abatement on public land, so Parks Direct and Waterfront and Public Works get about $450,000 a year to go towards contracts to remove vegetation. And there's more information on that, the Firefield Program. The one-time funding that came through at the end of calendar year 18, this is how we are planning to spend it. Some of the work is happening already. PRW is, has three main parks that are working on. Evacuation routes and footpaths is what Public Works is going to be working on, clearing vegetation along those. We want to use a lot of it for public education, so we're talking about a demonstration garden in one of our fire stations, public outreach, improvement, improving designs and things around parks. We have some identified spots we need to remove some vegetation and trees, so we're working on that as part of a new contract that Parks is working on. And then, the seasonal fire crew program, we are working on the CAL OES grant that would fund, essentially what we want to do is have a fire cadet program, where we can take youth works or kids out of the B-Step program, employ them throughout the year to do vegetation management removals, and at the same time in the offseason, look at how we can use them throughout the city to do tree replacement and things like that. So, that's all possible. Future action that we're considering, this is where it gets a little more dicey, and we are working on identifying funding for that. You'll see some of the budget requests, we're going to work on grant opportunities for some of it. So we have eighty-something items that you guys referred to, that the Commission Um, so we have eighty-something items that you guys referred to, that the commission and we have prioritized. But your blessing, they got a lot of first basically the budget process. So we'll see how that pans out. Um, currently I'm the one working on this, so I'm hoping I will get some, uh, through various sources, some people to help out with that kinda work. So we can really keep this focused and get back to that point in the mid-nineties where we had dedicated staff for wildfire safety. Um, that includes ongoing funding, uh, and public education. Uh, what we don't have really is a comprehensive ongoing wildfire fuel mitigation plan. This is the thing. This is something Cal OES, uh, and Cal Fire can fund. So, um, if we're successful in getting funding for that, we will hire somebody to help us do that. So we actually have a plan that, that considers all the stuff we talked about and moves us forward. Um, we can talk a little bit about utilities. There's undergrounding, there's hardening of the system. Uh, you know, there will be dedicated staff to that now. Um, we will have to collaborate with PG&E, but stopping emissions is important. So that's something that we can look at, uh, moving on. We're gonna be reviewing our fire codes. Again, we talked about how our codes can be triggered by weather. Um, also, we need some clarification for the public and for our inspectors on enforcement and, and what we require. Um, finally, we'll talk about, um, safe passages. So one of the things that comes up a lot is how do we restrict parking? How do we make sure that streets are clear when they're narrow? Uh, there, are, are some neighborhoods that really want parking restrictions or others that don't? So we are, uh, talking to Fareed, uh, about where we are with this program. What we wanna do is have three locations, um, to pilot various ideas. If you consider how we, in, instead of framing it as we wanna take away parking, we just wanna identify, what do we need to get people in to fight fire and people out to escape fire? Identify those paths through the streets where we need this to stay open. And then whatever happens on the fringes of that, if we can provide turnouts, if people wanna put parking on their own property, if you can fit a car parked not in that lane of passage, that safe passage corridor, that's fine. And we can look, look at programs to, to help people, um, you know, incentivize more parking off the street. But rather than red zoning everything and saying you just can't park here, well, well, you can park there as long as you're leaving our corridor free for ingress and eaves. Um, so more to come on that. It's been too wet to actually get paint on the ground. Uh, so we don't have demonstrations yet, but we're working on that. And then finally, there's a lot to talk about, siren system or different ways to do emergency public information and warning. Um, we're learning a lot about that from, from the last couple of years fires. Uh, all of it's expensive, um, the efficacy of it, both from a, uh, everyday standard, but also for people with, we, we wanna give lots of options to the people who maybe can't hear or can't see, um, or have mobility issues are gonna get notified and get out. People who don't wanna get themselves on the ground. So there's a lot more to come with emergency information and warning. And I believe in that. So I hope you have questions. I'm sure you do. Um, a lot is in the plans. Feel free to email or call if you have questions about that. That's where we are as of today.
Okay, thank you very much for the excellent report. And I just wanna thank you, Chief Brannigan, the staff in the fire department for, for all your work on this issue. It's incredibly important. I know that, um, in response to the fires in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, certainly it's an issue that is a great concern to our community. And I really appreciate the, the, all the work and focus on this. And just wanna thank the city manager for finding excellent people to put in these department positions and just have a good leadership in our fire department. It's so essential. So I wanna open up a public comment on item three, wildfire safety planning. Would anyone like to address the city council on the side?
My name's Chris Cullender. I live on the edge of Cal Fire very high hazard zone. So I'm very interested in effective evacuation strategies. I'm a cert trader. I am involved with radio groups that are trying to, uh, verify evacuation routes through the hills. And, uh, I applaud this plan. This is, you've done a lot of work and there's more to do, but, um, you've come very far toward what we need to get done. I'd also like to acknowledge, you did acknowledge in the audience several members of the fire and safety, date the disaster and fire safety commission. We also have here with us the president of the Berkeley Path Wanderers Association, who is so important in getting the paths out of the hills and they are in the process of clearing them, rebuilding them, and in general, making it possible that people can evacuate. Thank you.
Any other public comment on item three?
Thank you, Chris. And I would just wanted to introduce myself. I am Alina Konstantinescu, the president of Berkeley Path. I might speak with you at other occasions. Just wanted to put my face out there. Thank you, Chief, for all the work on this. Um, the most important thing about, um, the path wanderers is really we're a group of volunteers. All of our, um, the work that we do maintaining the path in the hills and building new paths is through donations. We also sell a map. We make three dollars on the map. You know how much it costs to put a handrail on a path? Ten thousand dollars about. So just put that in perspective, but how much, you know, we do all we can with our support initiatives and a lot of enthusiasm. Um, but we sure could appreciate some real funding either for grants to the fire department, public works, et cetera. Um, we have worked with Keith May. We had a meeting with him. Um, it was very good to, to see that we can make those connections. Um, we also, um, did an inventory of all the path this past, um, summer. Um, I don't know if you know, how many are out there? How many are missing signs? How many are missing handrails? And how much such a report would, um, cost Public Works to hire consultants and do? We did that poll for you for free, but, uh, with eighty volunteers all over the city. And so we'd like to move on some of those items, all those missing signs. I mean, if people wanna find evacuation route, perhaps the most important thing is at least to know that there's a sign there and that's a path. And I believe it's driveway. That's a very kind of low hanging fruit that we think, um, we could work on. And we'll take it from there. I always think of, um, sending you all like a hard copy of this report. So if you see it in your mail, notes from me, reach out if you have questions, um, we're happy to work with you on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're coming this evening for all your work. Vice Mayor Winberg?
Yeah, can, can you come back please to the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanna personally thank you and the Berkeley Path Wanderers for all of the work that you have done to make the paths accessible, um, for both walkers and for safety reasons. Um, it's really, it's an extraordinary gift to the city and, um, I personally appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Now, on behalf of, of our board and so forth, I am the president. I just take the accolades, but really there's so many people behind me through the door. I just wanna acknowledge everyone, but thank you and thanks for your support.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the floor?
Kelly Hammer. Um, I've heard Chief Brannigan talk many times, uh, several times at the Fire Safety Disaster Commission about how fires are really changing and spread so rapidly. And how quickly Berkeley could really burn down. And of course, the eight minutes on Kensington was a real shock that a fire in Strawberry in the Wildcat Canyon could burn Kensington to the ground in eight minutes, right? Um, so I'd like to focus on a couple of things. I think we really need to address the parking in the hills, you know, whether it's one side of the street or whatever it's done. But this is, the, we can't, we cannot keep postponing this because somebody doesn't wanna give up their parking. Uh, we have to really deal with it. And even though I live in the flats, I have to be very concerned about what happens in the, in the hills and in the fire zones because of how quickly this can really encompass the entire city. I'm wondering if we shouldn't be looking at different construction san, standards, um, for all of our homes if we're moving into this time of really, um, high fire danger. Uh, that we shouldn't be, all of us shouldn't be looking at things a lot differently. Um, and while I appreciate the path wanderers, you know, just how quickly these fires burn and how they can spread with embers being blown, uh, far ahead of the main fire, uh, we're not really gonna be able to outrun them. Um, so those were, those were some of the main things. And just little things that Chief Brannigan had brought up at fire safety, just learning how to back into your driveway could mean a difference between being able to evacuate and save your life for your neighbors. There are lots of things to do. Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Radhika. I'm on the Disaster and Fire Safety Commission. Um, so yeah, accolades of course to, um, Chief Brannigan and his staff is incredible. The evacuation plan, which is in the draft form, um, is, is really a thing of beauty, um, now all the work they've been doing. But it isn't enough. It's not enough. Um, the city of Paradise also had a really excellent evacuation plan, kind of a model. Um, in the state, it wasn't enough. So, um, I heard during the previous item, someone said that their code name for whatever was Be Bold. Um, and I would really, really say that is really what's needed here. It's time to be bold on, um, wildfire safety in the city. Um, the time for outdoor sirens, I believe, is now or preferably yesterday. Um, the time for really, really aggressive public outreach that's just not happening enough. So everybody understands the alerting is yesterday. Um, I think Chief Brannigan's idea, which I don't fully totally know yet, but I believe what it is is essentially to paint, you know, a red strip down the streets, um, that's twenty-six feet wide or whatever width is needed for, um, crews to get through, you know, that is really bold. Um, that's really what's needed. We need bold action. It's, it's overdue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the workshop you've been holding. It's, it's good to hear these things. It's good for people to begin to think about them. But there's one lacking, and that is I don't hear enough about how to handle the groups of the elderly and the disabled. Those were the people who were most likely and did die in a campfire. And I need to hear more about that. We need to concentrate on that. The paths are wonderful. There's no denying that, but many of them are simply too steep for, even with a handrail, for disabled people or the elderly to use. So we need to talk about parking and we need to put into this whole mix land use. How much density do you wanna put in the areas in the high fire per zone? How much density? Uh, a very simple thing. Maybe it would work, maybe it wouldn't. But, you know, before I came to the meeting tonight, we had Airbnb parker in the front of our house of blocking, uh, almost blocking the driveway. Um, maybe you have to ban Airbnb in the high fire zones.
Thank you, Mayor Neve.
Christine Schwartz again. Um, I wanted to second, um, the mayor's, uh, comments, um, about supporting people with disabilities and elderly people. Um, in addition, uh, well, I would like to have, um, more cert, uh, practices, um, with them involved and their, um, attendants, their caregivers, et cetera. Um, I live with somebody who's communication challenged and, um, it would be nice, comforting to know that we could reach out to those who are communication challenged in whatever ways, whether they're, um, deaf or, um, whether they have a hard time verbalizing or whatnot. Um, I also live in a highly, um, student populated area and, um, it's high turnover. Um, so it would be nice to have a way of identifying how many people are in all of their units um, because of the turnover, so that when emergency staff come to rescue, that they would have an idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the side? Any other speakers on the side? Okay, thank you for your comments. And, um, I wanna bring it back to the council and just wonder, okay, so we have several members of the Disaster and Fire Safety Commission here with the chair, Paul David Cole, Victoria Legg. I'm very proud to have my, my appointee to the commission, Radhika Cousin, and a new appointee, former mayor, Sherwin. So welcome. Thank you for being here. It's important to have our commission present and we really appreciate all the work that you've been engaging in the past few years and addressing some serious problems here. Vice Mayor Winberg?
Thank you, Mayor Arty. Um, first, I wanna thank, um, the fire department, um, all of you, the whole department, um, for your cooperation, working with my office, um, to deal with the problems. We have a lot of work to do, but I really look forward to working with you in the future to try to meet the challenges. Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is my understanding is that Cal Fire, as a result of all the fires that we've experienced in the last few years, is redefining, um, the high fire hazard area, areas? And I wondered if you have any idea what we can expect in Berkeley as a result of that redesignation?
Yeah, we've met with Cal Fire a few times recently around grant opportunities, which kind of ended on that line. And we don't expect too much to change. Um, I mean, do you, have you heard anything to the counter? Uh, it's, it's, uh, for this area, pretty clear delineation of where the weather impacts, um, in the terrain intersect. And that's kind of a drive to it. So we wouldn't anticipate much change.
Okay. And, um, um, I remember when we had the fire assessment district and we had a much more robust inspection program. And I think we need that again. And I'm wondering, um, city manager, what do we have to do to re-institute a fire assessment district?
I don't know the, I don't know the exact process. I won't be able to lay it out for you this evening, but I can certainly lay out the process and remember by seeing our council.
Um, I would really like to investigate that. Um, I think that there, you know, I started working on this issue when I came into office, but I have to say that in the past couple of years, um, people are beginning to really get it. They're really beginning to understand that we live in a very vulnerable area and, um, that we need to sort of take action. And I think that there would be public support for such a thing. So especially if it meant there would be assaults. So right now, we're only inspecting Ruski Peak East. It's not a very big area. It doesn't take in a lot of population. We have water about eight thousand homes in the high hazard fire area. And, um, so I, I really would like to, to look into that, city manager, and, um, and see if, if we can get going on doing that. Because I think, um, we're very lax, frankly, about inspections. And I know other jurisdictions like Warren County, they take it very seriously. They inspect the properties. They send you a letter telling you exactly what you have to do to remedy the problem. And if you don't remedy it within a certain number of days, you're slapped with a big fine. And I think we have to get tough. I think the situation deserves getting tough. So I'm willing to take the heat. It's mostly my history. And, um, I really would like to see us, you know, try to, try to meet that challenge. Um, so in terms of, you know, how do people get information? Um, with PG&E's new policy of preemptive power cuts, I think it's problematic to tell people to go to their computers. Um, because nobody's gonna have power. Um, I would rather suggest to people that if PG&E cuts the power, that people leave.
And to that point?
No fooling around.
Yeah, we, um, Phil Merton and I attended the CPUC's, um, workshop a few weeks ago on, uh, it actually ended up focusing on the acts of functional D community and the impact on that community, uh, that segment of our community if there were to be a power shutdown. And so a couple of good things came out of that, um, from, from my takeaways, including just reframing how we do this plan. Because what I realized in listening, if they have a lot of great experts talking about their own experiences, that talking about their own experiences, that if we, and to the former mayor's point, if we focus our planning on people with access and functional needs who will need extra time and extra help to get out, that will pave the way for anyone else who needs to get out, right? And if, that could really be how we frame our plans. We spend every day planning for the worst, and helping people get out that can't help themselves out is probably the worst case scenario that we need to be able to address. And to that point, we're going to have a couple of days' notice of PG&E shutdowns, and it's going to be coordinated with that fire weather matrix. And so our first message will be, we're going to help you have a plan, first of all. What will you do when this happens someday? And then how do you execute that plan? So when you hear that PG&E may shut down power a day from now, let's get you to a hotel. Let's get you to a family member who doesn't live in that area. That's the first way to start, is exactly what you're saying. Leave now, before power's off. And then for people who aren't willing or able to do that, then what is your plan? And that's where the public education and training comes in. Have people prepped. And the point about turnover is very valid, too. We have to do this on a continual basis if we can. It's like vegetation management, right? Tell me when we can cut the budget on vegetation management, well, that's when planes stop early. It's the way things are going, and they may happen. But, but the same is true of public education. We have so much turnover in this town, and it's got to be an ongoing, continuous barrage of information, and it's important to the public.
My other issue, as you well know, is safe egress and access. And, you know, we've talked about restripping the pinch points for a gazillion years, and we haven't done it. And I don't know, I don't know why not. Why can't we just go do it? Give me, give me a can of red paint. I'm serious.
I'll get to read that.
How hard could it be? We need, we need to do it, okay? We need to do it because we know, we have to learn from everybody else's experience. We need to keep those roads clear. People have too many cars. They don't use their garages. They don't use their driveways. We need to re-educate them and make it legal for them to do certain things. We do it in other areas. We do it, and maybe it'll legal for people to do other things. So I really, I know I sound frustrated, but, and I appreciate all your cooperation. We need to do it before the fire season starts. And as you well know, we don't have fire seasons anymore. It's all year round. So we've, you've identified the pinch points. We know where they are. I think we should go ahead and do it. I support you 100%. And as I said, I'll take the heat. The other issue that I've been noticing is vegetation and approach into the public driveway on those very narrow streets. You know, people, people can live on one street and their backyard comes down onto another street, they don't even know what's going on, right? Caliphs is a perfect example. Upper Caliphs is a perfect example, where vegetation is growing and it's getting narrower and narrower. We need to enforce on that. And I don't know if it's your department who does that, or if this public works who does that, but we should be, we should be looking to do that as well. If you would let me know what kind of resources you need, then, you know, I can try to get it allocated in the budget. This is a really serious citywide problem that we need to get tough about, and we need the resources to carry out the plan. So let me know.
It's good. Thank you. Councilmember Trust.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and I want to thank you for all your work and meeting earlier this week. I also want to thank the commissioners who are here and our community volunteers, Berkeley Path Wanderers. We have a lot, a lot of work ahead of us, and I completely agree with Councilmember Winberg. I'm also willing to take the heat, because I think it's absolutely critical that we address safe evacuation routes, particularly in the hills, and especially since I represent Panoramic Hill. I mean, that is, that's clearly a very high-risk area. I wanted to ask a little bit about the fire zones, and I'm really interested in this distinction between the CAL FIRE border and a portion of, you know, a lot of hazardous fire zone two is within that CAL FIRE border, but there's a portion that isn't, and I'm just, I'm curious how those zones were initially established and why it extends beyond the CAL FIRE border.
Well, I can tell you what we have found. We have a very detailed list of the origins of those, started in 1928, all the way through now, defining those lines, but they don't have an explanation of why they were defined as such. I can tell you, they were identified and defined before CAL FIRE did that work. So I think the city, just knowing the geography of where that line goes, you know, it kind of cuts through Shattuck and then down the, you know, the circle and whatnot. So I think it's, I think it's a physical delineation of where the hill slope declines, and you get more of a flat nature. That's my best guess, but we don't have any detailed record of why it is like this. And the last update was, they got to the shape they're in, half of the mid-sixties, and they've been tweaked a little bit, and properties are added and taken out, but that's the most detail we have.
Thank you for that. It's just curious. I also think that vegetation management is enormously important as well, and happy to support any of your efforts in that regard. And also, I'm curious if you could speak a little bit, I know we've talked a little bit about this, about your coordination with the City of Oakland, because I know that we are working some with Dan Cowell, Oakland Health and River, Dan Cowell's office, to make sure that we have sort of seamless, seamless access along those routes where Berkeley and Oakland meet, so people can have safe evacuation routes, and I was wondering if you could speak very briefly about that.
Yeah, the coordination we do with Oakland is primarily through the Hills Emergency Forum, and they, they have a dedicated staff of inspectors. So they have, they have a lot more public property that they have to deal with, but also big swaths and big parcels, private property. And they do sort of what Councilmember Winberg was saying. They, they go on the properties, they restrict enforcement, they do follow-up, because they have the dedicated staff to do that. Where the collaboration comes in is mostly on the Grizzly Peak corridors, so they work a lot with East Bay Parks and UC to do clearance off of major roads. So they, they aim for 20 feet off of roads, and in fact, the Grizzly fires that we had a few years ago was largely slowed down, we'd say, because they had recently treated that area, and there just wasn't a ton of vegetation still there. We don't have a lot of overlap. We're going to look at the Alvarado Neighborhood Tunnel for that kind of parking restrictions that they're doing now. We want to make sure we're mirroring that work. Where we intersect in those places is a lot of private property, so then it would be a combination of, you know, of course, the climate change, and helping them realize the importance of privatizing the areas in our city, and then working with them to make sure private property is enforced. Part of what we need to do in our city is, and to this code review is going to be improving, if we, if we inspected the structure, we have the right to enter the property and do what we need to inspect. We don't have that right for vegetation management inspections in Berkeley, so that's a simple thing we can change that Oakland does and other jurisdictions do. The other thing is we don't have really well-defined requirements of what we want on property. There's so much to talk, and this is where we have to work with legal, is defensible space is a real thing in very high fire hazard zones, but you can't make defensible space in Berkeley, right? Houses are as flammable as vegetation. So we have to come up with a more practical, reasonable code and a combination of building code changes. We do have building code restrictions for zones two and three, where you do updates and things like that. You have to do that. But also just reasonable vegetation management. Like a tree's okay if it's trimmed up high, if it's kept clean, if you don't have ladder fuels to go from a grass fire up to a canopy fire. So if we can really better define for the public and for, quite frankly, our inspectors, we'll have more effective enforcement, we'll have better mechanisms, and that's part of the code review.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And the last thing I'll say, or I guess I would just like a little bit of feedback on, is this idea of an alert system, and I know some people are excited about a variety of different alerting systems. Some people like sirens. In my mind, it almost seems like, given, given my reaction, for instance, to car alarms, that it seems like that we have a tremendous capacity to block, to block things out, even, even sirens. So it almost seems like it might be a more cost-effective approach to somehow equip each household with some sort of alerting device that would be more effective in telling people when, what they should do or when they should get out. I was wondering if there's something similar to that, or have you thought about different alternatives?
Yeah.
I'm sure you've thought about it, but can you explain a little bit?
We think that a lot.
Yeah.
We think of a lot. Sirens have their pros and cons. You know, UC has a siren system that they can actually enunciate instructions. That doesn't help people who are hearing impaired, but, but it's effective for the people that receive the message. General, like, air raid sirens are effective if the public is educated as to what that means. And what we would, if we went with a system like that, we would have to educate the public, go to, now find the information. If you hear the siren, go check out why we're doing this on the radio, or what type, what have you. We're also looking into the possibility of, you know, the old school weather, weather band radios, those are evolving, too, and there are some that we could send direct messages to. We don't have all the details yet, we're still kind of looking into it, but that would be a possibility, too, that we can equip or make available to have those in a household or a business or whatever, classroom, where if we could send an alert through that, if you want to sleep with your cell phone off, but you can keep that thankful, and that might work, too. So the message around emergency public information and warning is that you need a lot of options. You need a lot of possibilities. You have to be able to reach people in different ways, and you really have to educate people to be, to be informed on how to get informed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramon.
Thank you. So first of all, Chief Brannigan and Chief Ramon, what incredible teamwork, what incredible team. Your injection of energy and thought and the work that you're doing to pull together cohesive plans and just launch us is just breathtaking, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to join the mayor in commending the city manager. I mean, I think today we've had three presentations, and it really, really shows the strength of the people who are in the heart of heads as well as staff, but it really makes a difference. And I want to thank you for that, for the faith that you've toward in these amazing people. I want to thank Mayor Shirley Neve for agreeing to serve as District Five's new Disaster and Safety Commissioner. She has spent decades, maybe a half century, advocating for and caring about Berkeley. And I think that I'm very honored and grateful that she's willing to serve, continue serving in this really important capacity. And a lot of people recognize, I want to shout out to the Path Wanderers. I think that we are all recognizing that this is not just about pleasant paths, which certainly they are. And having grown up in Berkeley and taking paths to and from school for my whole life, well, my whole childhood, they are one of the true delights, but they're also very important. And I think in the increasing recognition of their role, we do really need to look at how we can support them better. They have a lot of sweat equity, but they need a little more equity, and it's not a lot for their projects, and I really like us to kind of institutionalize that if we can. And I also, of course, want to recognize all the Fire Safety Commissioners. I also want to join myself with all of Councilmember Winberg's comments. I just say, do it to all of it, including, you know, being willing, and as Councilmember Trust as well. I think if we're going to do some kind of assessment district, it's going to be mostly in our districts, and I'm willing to go out and fight for that. So I really think the time has come, and I would recommend that we look at the hazardous fire zone two, obviously treat it as well as possible boundaries, because it's a legitimate, you know, boundary that we know. And whatever we do, if we can get an assessment, that it be sort of broad, so that it's not just locked into vegetation management or something. So maybe it's, it's warning systems or whatever. We want a little flexibility in it, but... Okay. I have a bunch of little comments and sort of questions. They don't necessarily need answers right now, but I just run through them, and if you want to answer any of them now, you can, otherwise, I'm sure we'll be talking a lot. One, well, maybe I'll save that for last, that's the one you actually might want to answer. So red flag days. I think people are really tired of signs. We are so over signed in Berkeley. People like flags. I know you guys do them, I think it's yours, fire stations, but I really think that, you know, a little flagpole in the circle, a flagpole at the top of Marin, and maybe one at Spurs in Marin. I think we could, I may have to put the flags up, but I actually think that the warnings with a little charm are also, are also worthwhile. I do think that people like flags, and so I just, that could be another way of getting this, in a foxy way, into the neighborhoods, getting people used to sort of seeing these things, say, take off homework in the morning, you come out, pass that red flag. I like to put that in the bucket.
You're thinking ahead. We, we don't have the draft of that plan available yet, because it's not fully made, but that is, we've met with staff around the city, and one of the, we want to do exactly what you're talking about, and all city buildings in there.
Great.
So throughout town.
Yeah. I mean, it's not about expensive people and I think the main cost is folks to go around and put the flags up.
They can go right on the existing flagpoles, where, that's the plan.
Great. So I noticed buried in there fuel reduction at John Hinkle. I think I better just comment to the city manager, and I would imagine probably also for District Six, where they mentioned Cortneys and Brem Yard.
Brem Yard.
Or whatever it was, yeah. I'd like to talk with parks before they launch into anything like that, before they announce it, just because there's a lot of issues around that park, and I think we need to be careful how we introduce these. Very good ideas, but we need to bring them into the neighborhood in a thoughtful way. Put paths. You mentioned lighting the signage you can report, handrails. That just has to be in there. Okay, maybe I, maybe I missed, I thought I missed on lighting the signage. Your idea of relocating the tree canopy, this is a new one for me. I really appreciate this, but, and I have to say, I agree. We have to increase the number of trees we have in Berkeley, but they are poorly placed from a fire perspective. I just wanted to let you know that this, the Sierra Club, which I'm also involved with, has something called a Tree Team, and it operates in Oakland, but they never operate in Berkeley, because no one has ever shown them that we have the need. In a couple of weeks, they will have seen this. That is also a volunteer effort that could use a little help, but that little help goes a long way, because it's leveraged with volunteers, and I'd love to talk with you about it. They plant trees. They just plant trees, and, you know, we can talk about it more another time. I've seen that as an issue. I wanted to let you know there is a model out there that's very volunteer-driven, and maybe we can talk about how we might be able to make something like that happen in Berkeley. And the focus is Oakland on areas that are tree poor, and it looks like we have the same pattern here in Berkeley, so I have some ideas on that. On your future action list, I echo the mayor, the former mayor's comments, and I really appreciate that you guys have, have dug a little deeper in this question of people with restricted mobility or, or people who can't... mobility, or people who can't hear, a siren or whatever, that we really, really focus. And I didn't see that in, you know, Brooklyn as a bullet point in your future action. I think we should be more explicit about leading with that, and I agree with you that if we solve that problem, we will probably have solved everybody else's.
Yeah, we actually have a group at the Office of Emergency Services Coordinators that we call, because of lots of things with the ACR and Beacon, but it's our beacon.
Yeah.
And it's actually a group of agencies that serve people with access to functional needs, that they, we engage them in our planning process. So we don't want our client to know all the solutions, so we ask them to help write plans and review plans from that also.
Yeah. The data from the Paradise Fire really jumped out to me when they listed all of the victims, and it's sort of such a colossal tragedy, but it's
And that's why I also
100 people, and I think I only saw one who was under 55. And the bulk were clustered around 70, 80, and I had to assume that some of the younger in that group may have had other challenges. And it just was very clear that this is, this is a population that we need to have a special plan. We need to know what we're doing. So, you, I just, you very amusingly refer to pines and eucalyptus as an exotic canopy forest. Thought that was really nice. Chuckled a little bit. On your evacuation brochure, I would love to have some pre copies to distribute in my district. Like to talk with you about how many we can get, maybe Councilmember Wenber might be interested too. And on this whole warnings question, I think diversity will be strength. I think the more things that you have going, the more likely that more people will hear them. And so I don't think we should be thinking like, should it be this, or should it be that? Let's do it all. Because people communicate in different ways, people have different abilities. I personally don't feel like we need to be that scientific about it. I think we should do the sirens. I think we should do, you know, everything. Big radios, whatever, because that's how we're more likely to capture everybody. So, I just commend you, this work is amazing, it's so heartening. I hope you come into District Five and present this in a community, because I think the community really needs to hear this and understand what your hands are in, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Depp.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the report. I was curious as to, I was looking at pages 45 through 89, who talked about the staff, and I was curious about the status of the energy assurance, and the improving disaster resistance of natural gas, and the delivery of East Bay mud. Is there adequate supply of water? And the status of the collection and analysis of Berkeley hazards and risks reduction techniques? And how will this be communicated to the public? And then extreme heat events and climate change, adaption planning into city operations, is that happening? But also, I was curious as to, I mean, I'm all for sirens, because like I said previously, in Oakland, on the first Wednesday of the month, you hear the siren, everybody knows what that is, I feel. And if we started that pattern in Berkeley, people would start being aware of the siren. And also, it could maybe, when the siren goes off, the people, I don't know if this is possible, but people that are hearing there, that have a volume of light, you know, maybe that could go off instead, I don't know, whatever. But some ways of thinking about that. And then I'm also wondering, I know I took like a four, one, two, three, whatever, trainings previously, and we have these cards, like a yellow, a red, black, for like if somebody was injured, or however. So I'm just curious if there's any kind of way to alert you, or whomever, that this house has a disabled, or a senior, or some, you know, someone that needs extra assistance, has access to functional needs, to like implement some kind of sticker, or something, you know, like on a mailbox, or, you know, something so that people, you know, when they drive up, they know that this household has someone with special needs, so that you would be aware of that when you went to rescue or whatever. And then enforcement, 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 for all those people that park in the red, and I constantly see all the time. And like just last night, in my apartment, I hear a siren, I guess it was a fire engine or an ambulance, but the guy had to beep the horn to get people out of the way. It would be nice if you guys could give people ticket, not, or take down that information so they can get a ticket, because that's just like ridiculous, and I'm still tired of people not getting out of the way for emergency vehicles. And, yeah, and then also, the path wanderers, since they're doing such incredible work, thank you very much, and for everyone else in the room, for the commissioners, for all the work that you're doing. But I'm wondering if somehow with the funding that's available, if they could get what they needed to do the work that they need to do on these paths, because that is an alternative, even though it might not be for everybody, so people can access that. And for like solar lighting, the railings, or all that stuff.
Yeah, and actually, to that point, so the 200,000 that's allocated to public works, Reverend Harrington's intention is that most of that will go to support the paths. And I just want to say also, path wanderers are exclusively written, their work is exclusively written into the evacuation plan, and we're intending for that, along with the routes that were identified as likely driving routes, but also the footpaths, to be a target for better support and funding in the future to support the needs of the evacuation plan. And if I could, the other group that actually didn't put up the report, because it's part of the red flag day plan, which isn't in there, that is MAOC, the Northern Halloween Academy and radio operators, we have a very close partnership with them. They were not in the scope of many of this, which I felt bad for after I realized it, but they are critical to our fire patrols, notification systems, and in communication when there are issues. So I want to make sure they don't go unrecognized, because they're a big part of our plan.
Yeah, and then just as part as education and outreach, like someone said, one of my colleagues talked about they're using the dry blades and the garage, so I don't know if you can send out some promotional material, or have some, you know, just like a piece of paper, or a card, that says all these little things that people can do that don't cost anything, and, you know, to make it easier for, in case there is a catastrophe or fire or something that people need to, and the alternative.
Yeah, and we send out, currently Parks sends out a letter with the launch of the Chipper and the Breed Bag Program. Our intention is in the future to have that same letter be accompanied with a letter from the fire chief with things like that, so that should want a little piece of the outreach that we could tack on to a program at now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Castellbani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Brannigan, for your presentation, and I just want to thank you and all of the firefighters in Berkeley for keeping us safe every day. I really appreciate the work that you do, and I know this issue particularly affects Councilmember Wenber and Councilmember Hunt, but I think the fires that occurred in North Bay, as well as the campfire, you know, show us that, as you noted in your presentation, even areas very far from the fire, the sort of extreme fire zones can also be impacted. And so, my question for, I know we've talked a lot about notifying residents, and they can turn around seniors, people with disabilities, and people with, who may not be able to hear or see. I think my question, and this sort of comes from, you know, sort of the news reports that came out after the North Bay fires, you know, some questions about, should the whole community have been alerted through, as you're saying, like the AC alert system, where you don't have to opt in, and you would just get the alert, but there, you know, my understanding is there was some doubt because of the evacuation routes and not wanting to cause a frenzy. Do you have a protocol, you know, today, for what we would do in that type of circumstance? If you could just briefly explain that.
Yeah, and that'll be also hashed out as we finish the evacuation plan, but in terms of AC alert and how we operate now, we have both templates and guidelines upon the levels of alerting that need to happen. So if we need people to take protective emergency actions, we specify who and where we're making those notifications to. The people that don't need to take those actions, though, we can send a lesser level alert and say, this is happening. And especially when you talk about District One, we're going to be evacuating to your district. I mean, that's, all roads lead to District One and District Two, basically, right? So, we've identified places to shelter people, and landing spots for people to go, even if it's not a shelter. And so, we need to let people know what's going to happen. Now, one of the things we're trying to do is we're taking all those different grids we're creating, and we're going to, we're going to pre-program in an AC alert, those geographic distinctions, so that as we say, well, Zone Five and Six and Seven, you need to evacuate, we can send very specific information to those spots. I think you bring up a good point, which we'll, we can certainly address, was then what do we tell everybody else? So as we flush that out, we'll make it out of that, and it's an excellent point.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, I know it's getting late, I just wanted to understand, you know, you talked about a number of things to prevent fires, pre-positioning, the pre-positioned strike teams, this comprehensive wildfire fuel reduction plan, I think you also mentioned fire breaks, and so I think, you know, my question is, you know, what is the timeframe for us to be able to do some of these things, that we're in a better position, you know, when this fire does happen?
Well, the pre-positioning and the response teams, things like that happen now, that is going on. I think in terms of creating an effective fire break around our city, UC Berkeley's grants, East Bay Parks grants, and their regular work in the Maragor and the Fire District, have a lot of money that they were successful in getting this year. So they're starting projects that are working now, and we're working with them to have to influence them, hopefully not. We're using some of the one-time funding to do some work on fuel mitigation right now, and then we have a pending grant with CAL OES that we're anticipating, the final application will be in March. CAL FIRE has more money than they know what to do with in terms of grant funding, and didn't get enough applications in this latest round, so we're anticipating another round of CAL FIRE funding opening up in the next month or two. This year, you guys have authorized an additional FTE in the Fire Department to focus on grant funding and statistical reporting and analysis. So that office right now is working hard on those opportunities, which we haven't had that capability before, so it's, we're hoping it's going to pay off very soon.
And it should be noted that on the night of the fire, on October 8th, and this should be a case study in the state of California, is that we actually had a fire that night in the vegetation managed area with plenty of resources. So we had the MRA, the unit response area, where we had 20 fires, literally 20 fires responding to fire that was in the vegetation managed area, that was controlled within an acre and a half. And that was like, that should be the first case study. Unfortunately, they didn't get the noroirie, so obviously it was a bigger issue with the touch fire, but this system worked on that night to protect the city of Berkeley. It really did.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robinson.
Good to you. Although I live in a house with some too, I have the privilege of not thinking about this threat every day, but I'm so grateful. And most of the things on my mind to touch on right now, the question, so I, you know, we really didn't see you, we were talking like about just how incredibly walkable the city is, and I realized that I have no sense of the role of public transit in the case of evacuation, what happens to the bus routes, those still around, and to what extent we all communicate with the public transit, transportation system.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know where we are with engaging agency transit. The evacuation plan, the OES team is engaging with outside agencies right now, so it's out for public comment, but also we need partner agencies, and they're on the list. They're going to do, well, I don't want to answer for what they're going to do, because I don't have a good degree right now, but I'd be back to you very soon.
It is interesting, you noted too, the morning when the variable finds information about emergency situations happening on Twitter before the actual centers were engaging, is there, other than calling 911, what sort of mechanism or something, they try to encourage people, if you see that something's happening, hills, is there a faster way to make sure people all find out, and if you have some way to fix?
If you actually see a fire or an emergency happening, and you haven't heard anything, yes, call 911, listen to the recording. If you know there's something going on, like if you, if you got an earthquake, for example, and you're not injured or hurt, please don't call 911. You can call 311, you can turn on the radio, get in radio a little ways. You don't want to call out of our 911 system, because it's not a reporter of an actual emergency. However, for, though, that's a good question, and that's part of what we do, is we constantly look at what's new technology, what are information systems. This is something our city PM, with ICHACO, thinks a lot about and works on, and our 311 managers, so I will say it's a, not a fully baked part of the plan yet, and we're prioritizing getting the main pieces of the public engagement part done, and that's it, that'll be it. Communication back to us is always a big question. There's social media platforms, there's apps to do it, and it's a matter of what's going to be available. It could be as simple as people have to just run and tell us, send us a picture in your neighborhood. And those are conversations we have with the DMFC a lot, and with the CERT community, because it's a big challenge. We're working on neighborhood coordinators for each of the fire districts, so that the CERT programs, the neighborhoods, that big group, personally coordinating those kinds of efforts, and then communication back to us. But in terms of the actual mechanisms, there's a million ways to do it, and they're not going to find.
Thank you. Just a few quick points before we close. First, I'm very appreciative of the fact that we have already identified some one-time uses of the funding that we had allocated in November. And I'm particularly excited about the seasonal fire program, and I'm eager to see us continue that, expand that. I think having a cadet program that can work on vegetation management, can work on community engagement, I think is extremely important to enhance the resources that we currently have, and focusing on fuel reduction as well with these specific funds, that may be extremely important as well, and public education. Vegetation management, fuel reduction, and education, those are areas that we really need to, and we expand our efforts. And so, while we are sort of launching these initiatives this spring, you know, we'll have to discuss the continuation of them, or, you know, expanding these particular programs. I want to second my support for looking at the creation of fire assessment districts, because as you had noted, in 1997, you know, these inspector positions were eliminated, that really limited our ability to do productive inspections, and to ensure that we're managing vegetation in these high fire risk areas. So I think having a fire assessment district through a 218 process, which can increase inspectors, which provide resources for enhanced vegetation management, and supports some of these other initiatives, I think is extremely important. So, to the extent we can't yet explore the process of doing that, I think that would be very beneficial. But we'll have to have a number about how much we, you know, what the program looks like, so we can initiate that process. You had mentioned something around looking at what Oakland does, which is the right to enter properties for the purpose of vegetation management inspections. I think that's, if we want to really have a robust program, that's something we're going to have to explore. I agree that we need to move ahead with the red curbing, and if we haven't identified those pinch points, we should, we should just move ahead. You know, it's not just parking, which is really constraining access from these evacuation routes, there's also the undergrounding questions as well, and downed power lines, particularly in evacuation routes are going to create a very hazardous situation for people. So that's another issue that we need to continue to, continue our efforts on. So I'm very appreciative of all this work, the particular focus on education, developing an evacuation plan, looking at ways to begin to enhance notification, and vegetation management, and I think by exploring and I think by exploring fire, fire assessment district to have sustained funding for these programs, I think that's extremely important. And just in closing, I want to thank you, thank you so very much to you and your department for all your excellent work. Thank you. Bye, Mr. Mayor Wenberg.
I, I want to say that we need to convince our citizens that they need to take responsibility. You know, people always think, you know, they're going to be saved by the fire department. It's, it would be wonderful if that were true, but we know, we know from the last several modifiers that that is really not the case, and, and people need to start taking responsibility for their own behavior in the event of an emergency. And I think our CERT program is wonderful, and many people are participating, our numbers are up, I believe, we need to continue to fund that program and expand it, and really give people the confidence that they need to be able to take action when, when this happens. So again, I want to thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you. And that, with that, we'll close this item. Thank you very much, Chief Brannigan and staff of fire department, for all your excellent work, and unless there's any further discussion, is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Yes.
So, as I said, we're going to grab a second by Councilmember Councilwoman Vermont. Is there any objection? It's made adjourned, thank you.